We'll bring this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who is in attendance this evening at our meeting and also everyone that's viewing the meeting on G-10 television. To start out with tonight, I'm going to ask some gentlemen that are with us tonight from local Boy Scout Troop 370 if they will come forward. Mr. Andre, Andreas, and Adrian Sanchez, and Hunter Carter. And if you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, these young men will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, would you lead us in the invocation?
Our heavenly Father, we give you thanks as always for the blessings you so graciously bestow upon us individually and upon us collectively as the city of Jacksonville. We pray that you would empower each of us who serve, that we may serve always the common good, that we would always put service above self, and that each day we would strive to make our city a better place for all of us to live and working. We pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world for their safety and as always for their anxious families. As always, we ask again that you give guidance and direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Members of council, we have, you have before you tonight the agenda for this meeting along with the consent items, and at this time I would entertain a motion to adopt with the addition of a proclamation for Safe Kids, and we'll put it following Presentation D for the evening.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, the agenda to include Safe Kids after D.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the March 4, 2014 Special Workshop Meeting and also the March 4, 2014 Regular Meeting.
Mayor Philson, make the motion to approve the March 4 Special Workshop Meeting and the March 4 Regular Meeting minutes.
Thank you. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The meeting minutes have been approved. Next, I have about six presentations tonight, and I'm going to come around up front here.
First presentation tonight, I'd like to call my good friend.
Lou Hambrich, I see out here in audience, come up here and join me. Good evening.
How are you?
It's been great pleasure to be able to present this proclamation to you. This is Relay for Life is an opportunity to unite as a community to honor cancer survivors, raise awareness about what we can do to reduce cancer risk, and raise money to help American Cancer Society fight the disease. Today, with the support of thousands of volunteers, the American Cancer Society is helping save more than 400 lives a day. This year, Relay for Life is in its 20th year in Onslow County, and it will be held again at Northside High School beginning on Friday, April 25. Hopefully, it'll be a great night for that, and I hope we have a bigger turnout as we normally do. Or bigger.
I hope so.
I hope so. I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Relay for Life was founded in 1985 by Dr. Gordy Clatt, who walked and ran 81 miles in 24 hours around a track in Tacoma, Washington, raising over $27,000 in sponsored donations for the American Cancer Society. And whereas Relay for Life is an overnight team event to raise funds to fight cancer. Members of each team take turns walking, running around the track while a festive atmosphere is created with the entertainment and camping app. And whereas, the event begins with the cancer survivors walk. During the survivor's lap, all cancer survivors at the event take the first lap around the track, celebrating the victory over cancer while being cheered, cheered on by other participants. And whereas, the luminary ceremony takes place after dark, remembering those who have been lost to cancer, honoring those who have fought cancer in the past, and supporting those who will fight cancer as their life continues. And whereas, money raised during Relay for Life supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, and by finding cures for cancer, and by fighting back. Now therefore, I Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of April 2014 as Relay for Life Month in the City of Jacksonville, and I further encourage all residents to participate and help fight the war against cancer. And I know there's probably everybody in this room probably has had the experience of having a loved one, a friend or a loved one that has been, has had this disease, and you know, it's a good opportunity for you to come out and support further research. And LaRue, it's been great pleasure, and I know that you, you know, you have a lot here riding on this.
Right.
Would you like to speak?
And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And thank all you city council members. But on behalf of Carol Jamison, who has been our leader for Relay for Life for over 14 years, and the committee that they are now planning the Relay for the 25th and 26th of April, I'm here to pick up this, but we have asked and with the majors, the mayor, and their blessing, he has said we could challenge all survivors to wear their shirt on Sunday, April the 6th, so everybody can see that they are survivors because we hear so many people calling different people, saying, "I am so frustrated, I'm real upset, I've give up because there's no way to beat this." So we are challenging the survivors to wear and contact the place that they worship at, to ask them if they will, to at least ask them to stand up in there for a couple of minutes so people that has just heard this sadness from 2013, that they've been diagnosed with that six-letter word that none of us want to hear, that they can look around and see, gee whiz, I heard all the bad things about losing my hair, being sick all the time, but I worked with that lady or that man. And there, and they get a shot of inspiration and determination and courage to beat this six-letter word to help more people have more birthdays. And we thank all of you on behalf of Carol and the committee for your support of Relay for Life for raising funds in there so that it comes new medication and new inventions, and we see more people being saved year after year. And you know what? Onslow County is probably the spark that has lit the fire for so many counties and states that have gone up and raised so much money in there for Relay. Because this, through the city council, and the mayor, and different people, we are one of the 51 top-raised fundraisers for Relay in the United, in the world, not just the United States. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Thank all of you citizens.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. It's good to see you again, and keep fighting the fight. Next, I have a presentation I'd like to ask Suzanne Nelson. I know you're here, I saw you earlier. There you are. She's the chairperson of the Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee and the Jacksonville Tree Advisory Board Subcommittee, and I have a little, little proclamation to make to you. This is Jacksonville has a long tradition of observing Arbor Day and supporting beautification efforts. The city, the Jacksonville Tree Board, and the Environmental Appearance Advisory Committee work to advance efforts to improve the appearance of our city, and by just driving around, you can see that a lot of improvements have been made. This is a lot nicer looking city than it was 10, 20, 30 years ago. Traditionally, during the Arbor Day observance, Jacksonville celebrates the meaning of Arbor Day, and trees are planted at a city park. The 2014 Arbor Day observance will be held on Friday, April 25 at Wooton Park located on Cold Drive. And if you'll allow me, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day is celebrated to emphasize what we believe, that we believe in the importance of tree planting as a legacy for future generations. And whereas, trees protect land and structures by reducing runoff, binding soil, and minimizing flood damage. And whereas, trees reduce the cost of controlling stormwater runoff in addition to offsetting greenhouse gases from cars and homes. And whereas, the city of Jacksonville, through our landscaping and urban forestry efforts, will continue to beautify our city by planning, caring for, and preserving our trees for future generations. Now therefore, I Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim April 25, 2014 as Arbor Day in the City of Jacksonville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this special day by supporting efforts of protecting our trees and woodlands and to further our city's urban forestry programs for the well-being of our present and future generations. Suzanne, thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Jacksonville Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee and the Jacksonville Tree Board, we want to invite everyone to the 2014 Arbor Day Observation, observation that will be at 9:30 a.m., Friday, April 25. It will be at the Reverend E.W. Wooton Park, which is located off of Belfork Road along Ellis Boulevard. This year will mark our 34th year that the City of Jacksonville has been designated as a Tree City USA. This accomplishment is due to the actions of the mayor and the city council to fund and support actions that values trees in our community, and we thank y'all for doing that. We also have a special contest that will be taking place for those who would like to spread the word about valuing trees. We're looking for video stories that show the value of trees within our community. We'll have two divisions, a student and adult division, and the winner of each will receive a $50 gift card. You may find more details pertaining to the contest located on the City of Jacksonville website and the City of Jacksonville Facebook page. And the advisory committee would also like to thank the council for the commitment to the Clean and Green Campaign. Our advisory committee is taking action to organize a citywide cleanup campaign during the month of April, and will also be airing special information about the City of Jacksonville sanitation services on how they will pick up your curbside items and take them away. So we would like to use this spring as an inspiration to inspire all of Jacksonville to help keep the City of Jacksonville clean and green. Thank you.
For the next presentation we have tonight, I'd like to ask Chief Inara from the Police Department, or our Public Safety Director, and Captain Driggers. There you are. Also, Teresa Carter from their, our Onslow County Tourism. The North Carolina Association of Events and Festivals announced the 2014 Show Fest Excellence Awards during their annual meeting held in Charlotte on January 20, 2014. Each year, the association honors and recognizes the best of the best in the festival and events industry in the state of North Carolina. National Night Out was selected as the 2014 North Carolina Event of the Year. Teresa?
We've been doing this for about six years. It is a major, major accomplishment for us to bring this award back home. But I do want to tell you, when I asked the judges after six years of trying for this award, what made the difference this year, the one thing that they said about National Night Out is, "The police department did such a wonderful job, but the city of Jacksonville came together, and you could tell it was a community effort and that everybody partnered together." So I think it's a wonderful statement to Jacksonville, it's a wonderful statement to Onslow County, and I congratulate y'all.
It's quite a, quite an award. Congratulations. Good job. And good job to everybody that played a role in putting on this year's National Night Out. It's a team effort, definitely, isn't it?
Definitely.
Thanks. Chief, you might as well stay up here. All right. Now, oh, with a great deal of pleasure, I get to call up Officer Dale Silence with his wife Cheryl, who's in attendance. You also have some of your relatives here with you tonight. Hey, they ought to come up here with you. And bring the, and bring the little, the young one too, their daughter Ellie. This is Officer Dale Silence, his parents are Alton and Stephanie Silence. You don't have to do anything, just.
Thank you. Just stand.
We'll take care of the rest. How's that? All right. Thank you for coming. That's quite a, that's quite an honor here. Yes. Dale Silence is a native of Onslow County, graduating from Southwest High School in 1998. After serving at North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement, he began his career with the Jacksonville Police Department on May 14, 2007, serving as a patrol officer. In January of 2009, he was selected as an investigator and assigned to the Special Operations Division where he currently serves. Detective Silence holds an associate degree from Coastal Carolina Community College, as well as the advanced law enforcement certificate from North Carolina Training and Standards. Now, at this time, I assume you're going to hold the Bible for him. And I'll let y'all step over to the microphone. If you'll hold that and you'll repeat after me. "I, Dale Silence..."
"I, Dale Silence..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain..."
"That I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties of my office..."
"The duties of my office..."
"...as Sergeant..."
"As Sergeant..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"...and maintain and uphold..."
"And maintain and uphold..."
"...all the laws and regulations..."
"All the laws and regulations..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville, North Carolina..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville, North Carolina..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations, Sergeant Silence. Just as an aside, I want to have you come over here just a minute. You and I share something now. Come here. This date is special for both of us. March 18th is the day that you were promoted to Sergeant.
Yes, sir.
March 18th, 1974 was the year, the day and year I was sworn in as a Jacksonville Police Officer, 40 years ago. So we got something in common. Congratulations, Dale. It takes a lot of hard work to get where you're at, and, and the future's bright. Keep on plugging away. Appreciate what you do. Chief, before you get, let them go, I want you to say a few things about Dale.
I'll be glad for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the opportunity to say a few words about Sergeant Silence. You know, I, I think that one of the most important things that we do is promote new officers, and one of the things that really makes me feel good as an officer, you know, after 40 years, I know the mayor feels the same way, is that it really makes you realize that the department is in good hands. Yesterday, we had a press conference, we talked about the, a case where we took a dangerous predator off the street, and it was because of the dedication of the officers, officers like Detective Silence at that time, working on these cases to, to resolve them and to make our community safer. And it really does make my heart feel good in this community to know that we have great leaders who are going to move the department forward. So Mayor, I appreciate it. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thanks, sir.
Chief, I'm not done with you yet. Way to go, brother. Next, I have, this was the one that we added on, I would like to ask Kristi Pitchford if On Saturday, April 5, 2014, the Onslow County Safe Kids Coalition will be holding an event to raise awareness of childhood injuries and injury prevention during the summer. In recognition, a recognition of Safe Kids Day and to encourage all residents to attend, we've prepared a proclamation which I will read. Also, I want to note that Chief Inara is also a member of the Safe Kids Coalition and, and part of the partnership for children, right?
Exactly.
I would like to read this at this time. Whereas since 1988, there has been a 55% decline in the unintentional injury death rate among children ages 19 years and younger. And whereas, notwithstanding this extraordinary progress, unintentional injury is still the number one killer of children in the U.S. And whereas, around the world, a child dies from an unintentional injury every 30 seconds, and millions of children are injured in ways that can affect them for a lifetime. And whereas, Safe Kids Worldwide, a national network of over 600 coalitions, including the Onslow County Safe Kids Coalition, works every day to help parents and caregivers prevent unnecessary childhood injuries and fatalities. And whereas, the Safe Kids Coalition's joined with firefighters, first responders, medical professionals, children's hospitals, pediatricians, police officers, and other committed citizens in supporting child injury prevention. Now therefore, I Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Saturday, April 5, 2014, as Safe Kids Day in the City of Jacksonville, and call upon all residents of this, of Jacksonville to join with me in supporting the efforts and activities of the Onslow County Safe Kids Coalition to prevent childhood injury, and to dedicate each day to keeping our most precious resource, our children, safe from injury. And I will present this to you, and would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you very much to the council, Mr. Mayor, for their support, and also to an extent, an invitation to everyone here to please join us during our Safe Kids Day event, again on April 5, Saturday, from 10 to 2, at the Sam's Club Parking Lot. We would like to see everyone there, it's a very family-friendly event, so again, thank you very much for your support.
Next, it's with a great deal of pleasure that I'm going to ask a couple members of our youth council that are present tonight, Elizabeth Nalan and Vice Chair, she's the chairman, and Vice Chairman Robert Whaley. They're going to give us a report on some of the youth council's activity. Also, their coordinator, Carmella George, is present. I, no, I saw her earlier. Okay. Saw her hand, there you go. Okay. If you would come to the podium, please.
My name is Mary Phillips and council members. I am Elizabeth Nalan, Chairman of the Jacksonville Youth Council and junior at White Oak High School. I have Vice Chairman Robert Whaley, a junior at Jacksonville High School, here with me tonight. We truly appreciate your continued support of the youth council and are happy to have the opportunity to briefly share activities that we have been doing with you tonight. Just a bit of history. The Jacksonville Youth Council came to be because the youth who came before me asked for it. Some students were selected by their stu, by their school to attend a community summit. They were asked to comment on various issues, and they came up with the idea that there should be a youth council. They wanted a voice for the youth, a connection to the government, and a chance to talk about their future. The city... The city worked with Onzo School Board to make it happen. And today, we are here as part of the Jacksonville Youth Council.
We want to share a little bit about what the youth council has been doing. It can generally be divided into seven areas. Practicing governance, helping charities, learning about the community, serving the community, advocating for the youth, self-improvement, and serving the youth. We are a formal group, so there are elections, and officers take oath before you, the Jacksonville City Council. We learn much about the, the parliamentary procedure and what it means to be leaders within this process.
Another area the youth council has worked with heavily in the past and continues to work with is to help charities. The youth council has decided who it wants to help and whether it is in service or providing funds. We believe strongly in the value of volunteerism and encourage all of our members to be involved regularly in community improvement efforts.
The youth council regularly has special informational presentations at our meetings and have been allowed to participate in special training and learning opportunities that expands our knowledge of what we can do to make a difference in our community.
Another area of activity has been to serve the community. Each year, on the National Day of Service, we select a project to serve the community. We also participate in projects like Christmas Cheer Youth Day and Make a Difference Day each year, and programs like Patriot Day and the Beirut Memorial Observances.
The youth council holds monthly meetings at the City Hall and oftentimes serves as a focus group for programs and projects who desire a youth perspective on issues. Former JYC leader successfully advocated for the Jacksonville Youth Center as a safe place for youth and continues to host, host and serve many youth activities and functions. Many of our meetings and events involve youth empowerment activities which allow such instruction as leadership etiquette and public speaking.
The youth council takes great pride in being able to provide positive events and activities for the youth. We hold events throughout the year to keep teens engaged and offer special activities and trips in the summer.
Our newest initiative is Harmony, which stands for Helping All Reach More Opportunities Through New Youth Giving. It is a youth grants board, a partnership between the City of Jacksonville and the N.C. Care and Community Foundation. Harmony allows youth-led groups to apply for money and assist to create youth-directed projects that address community issues and challenges in this region. A board of young people makes the final decisions about which groups get money for the ideas for positive actions that support their peers.
In conclusion, I would like to thank you Mayor Phillips and the council members for your continued support of youth proj- proj- projects such as Sturgeon City and Harmony. I personally know that it will help me in the future and the endeavors that I have in the future. I speak for myself as well as Robert and the other youth council members in saying that I'd see the benefit in what these programs are doing in the youth and I would appreciate if they continued. Thank you again and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth and Robert, I'll have to say that, uh, when I sat down and met with y'all, it was last week or week before last, I, my time kind of runs together, but, but that was such a, such an energetic meeting, I thought, as far as getting, getting a good perspective on, on, on you. As far as what your desires for your community and the future is gonna be. And, and how you should play a very important role in developing that community of the future because you're it. You know, like I told you in our meeting, at some point, that baton, not the pin, but the baton's gonna get passed. You know, and it's folks like you. You know, people with your energy, you know, with your desire to be, fill leadership positions and your love of this community are the people that we look forward to guiding us through, you know, the days of the future. And I want to thank you very much. And I appreciate all the input that you give us. Again, like I said, we're gonna energize our youth council. You know, we're gonna get it energized, we're gonna make, we're gonna make use of those good brains that are working inside that organization. And I thank you for coming to us tonight. Well, like I said, I, I've, I've never been so impressed with, with young people in my life as I was that day. I was bold over them, thank you. All right. Moving on with the meeting, I think that what I'm gonna do at this point is I'm gonna take a real quick pause. And I know some of you came strictly for the presentations tonight. And you probably don't want to stay for the, uh, the main part of the meeting. So I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna stretch my legs and, and let y'all stretch yours and, and leave if you choose to do so. If you want to stay, by all means, please stay.
Well, well spoken, young lady.
Yeah.
From White Oak.
Yeah, from White Oak they're left.
The gentleman did just, is just as equally well from Jacksonville.
Great job.
Did a nice job.
Hi, Mr. Whaley, I'm a proud Cardinal too, forward ever, backwards never. Our three men that did our pledge of allegiance. Kristy.
I don't blame you. Uh, it's a, it's a whole lot better on TV, I can assure you. Yeah, hey, hey, I would love one right here, right now.
I always have my phone on with me at the hospital, if I have any records. Always have my phone on. Yep. When, no. Oh Lord, did I run out of cars? There we go. If you, um, send me a text or... I always have that phone on with me, so, um, I'm, I usually get there, um, just before nine and I'm there from like nine till eleven, so yes, four days a week and I'll be there until...
I think they're here for the UDO.
No, I got a, uh...
I think. It could be the satellite.
Steve Lawrence wanted to know where he could find the basketball.
The satellite is on TV, I don't know.
It's on True TV.
I think it's UDO. So the UDO, UDO's... Uh, Mr. Dr. Whiters. We're gonna go back in session now. I'm gonna go back into session with my microphone on. Okay. Uh, the first item we're gonna look at is, uh, number one on the, in the agenda packet. This is a repeal, the, uh, repeal the City of Jacksonville zoning and subdivision ordinances and adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance and new official zoning map. And Ryan King, the Planning Administrator, will be presenting this item.
Good evening Mayor and Council. After six short years, I finally stand before you asking that you consider adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance. The UDO, as we call it, it started back in two thousand seven, December of two thousand seven, with a scoping meeting, um, where Clarion, well, Clarion, our consultant, met with City Council, Planning Advisory Board, City Staff, and other key stakeholders within the community. They reviewed our current documents and ordinances, discussed things that were working, were not working with our development ordinances, and toured the city and tried to get public input on the things that go into a code that I just described. From that, they prepared a diagnosis and annotated outline that they presented to the City Staff and the Steering Committee that City Council appointed. And they met once again with their findings and this outline with the staff, the advisory committee, the Planning Advisory Board, and the City Council. They established five goals. They included increased customer friendliness, streamline the development review, modernize the zoning districts and uses, improve the development quality within the Jacksonville jurisdiction, which is the city limits and the ETJ, and encourage redevelopment. They established a structure that our new Unified Development Ordinance entails. There's nine articles. These ordinance includes our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. So this blending those two ordinances into one document and explains the different processes that are associated with those two ordinances that are now blended together into one. Task three, solve the drafting of the Unified Development Ordinance. This was prepared in three modules and it was reviewed by staff. Comments were made by staff and submitted to Clarion. They made adjustments to the proposed draft. That then went to the Steering Committee. One of the reasons why it took six short years was the Steering Committee went by the, went through the ordinance page by page and identified concerns and things that they thought needed to be included. Many of which, the Steering Committee members are here tonight. Um, I've seen Councilman Warden, who at the time served as a Planning Board member, Mr. John Pierce, Mr. Keith Walker. Uh, I think, I believe I saw Reverend Churchwell is here. And has, have I missed anybody else that served on the, Ms. Sheila Pierce, served on the Steering Committee to review this document. Like I said, it was three different parts. And we came up with the draft ordinance that is before you this evening. Wanted to go over through, or go over some of the general structure of the ordinance. Article one, nobody's gonna read this part that often. It's just basically the purpose and intent, what it applies to. Like, for example, it's applicable in the city limits and in our ETJ, which is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the area beyond one mile. It establishes rules for map and zone interpretations for the boundaries. And it also establishes the rules transitioning from the old code to the new code. One thing that this does, you can see on the right-hand side, it provides flow charts on how things go from application through the approval process. Some other changes that this code includes is a one-step conditional rezoning process. Currently, we have a two-step, so this will be a more streamlined process, which meets the, the goals of being more streamlined. Site plan procedures, we've already adopted some of those. Because we have worked on this for six short years, we have already brought some of those changes before you. Now, staff has the ability to approve development plans up to twenty-five thousand square feet. Before, that was five thousand. So we've already implemented many changes associated with the items found in, in this part of the code. One part that we have not adopted that we think will be of a great benefit is the administrative adjustment aspect. And that's gonna give staff the ability to provide ten or twenty-five percent, depending on the type, um, development standard waivers based on individual site conditions. So if there's some site constraint, we are allowed to kind of vary the hardfast rule, which is what it used to be, in the current code of ten feet. If there's some thing that basically prohibits them to fully comply with the ordinance, we have a percentage that we can adjust. We believe that will be of great benefit, given certain site constraints throughout Jacksonville. Another improvement is we're gonna reduce the zoning districts down from the base zoning districts and the conditional use districts, which are twenty-two base districts, twenty-two conditional use districts, uh, and the military reservation. So we're gonna go from forty-five current districts to fourteen. The other part that this ordinance will include that our current ordinances do not is graphics, which will help make interpreting things and demonstrating how we measure certain things more easy to understand. One of the things staff has tried to do with this ordinance based on council's direction is minimize non-conformities. Anytime you adopt codes, you always have the opportunity of creating some non-conformities. We made it a point to pay close attention that we didn't increase setbacks. If anything, we, um, decreased them so that we didn't create a non-conforming situation for the residences throughout Jacksonville. We also are bringing forth three planned development districts. As City Council may remember, you all have already adopted that in our current code that was taken from this Unified Development Ordinance. So technically, those will not be new because they're already in our current codes. Here's an, a picture of the zoning districts. You can see on the screen that there's graphics, there's photos, uh, up-to-date, more modern purpose statement compared to our current districts. And then an easy-to-understand-and-follow table on the right-hand side that identifies dimensional standards such as setbacks, maximum lock coverage, et cetera. Another example of a diagram that you will see in the UDO to kind of help identify where those measuring points are to be measured from. This ordinance contains a use table. Currently, if you want to know what residential districts allow a church as a permitted use, you have to go through each one of the individual zoning districts to find out if you can construct a church within the zoning district. This ordinance, you will go to one table, which is in Article Four, and you will be able to see which zones in one table you can build a church within. We believe this will create some of that streamlined and more user-friendly aspects of the UDO. One thing that this code more clearly defines compared to our current ordinance is accessory uses. So you will have a table similar to the use table that identifies what accessory uses are, where they can go, and we will have general standards for them. An example of those are home occupations. You can have a home-based business in our jurisdiction, but there are certain things and provisions that you have to meet, such as only the residents of the home can work at that home-based business. This is where those standards will be found. We also have things that are temporary uses. This ordinance will more clearly define those temporary uses and where they can go and the standards associated with those. Currently, our ordinances do not specifically address those, so it can become kind of cumbersome to try to figure out, is it allowed? Where it can go, what kind of provisions need to be put in place. Another example of the use standards with the use table for accessory uses. Another example of the use standards with the use table for accessory uses. In Article five, you'll find the development standards. This section will contain exterior lighting provisions so that we try to keep parking lot lighting and other types of outdoor lighting that spill over onto adjoining land uses that are not compatible with, so commercial next to residential. We will have lighting standards. We received input from Progress Energy at the time, now Duke Energy. Transportation impact analysis, no major changes there, although we have made some process changes that Mr. Prentz put in place a year or two ago. The landscaping standards, we simplified those. They've already been adopted, so there is no new proposed landscaping standards that are in the UDO because council has already adopted those. And they're much more user-friendly and easier to apply to a new development site and even to an existing development site. Some other things found in Article five are the flight path overlay. Council's already adopted that, so there's no changes there. The downtown districts, we're going to blend four downtown districts into two. The two residential districts are going to go to one downtown residential district. The two commercial downtown districts are going to go into one downtown commercial district. Council's already adopted those. So everybody in the downtown district, they will see no change compared to what's in the code today versus tomorrow because that text has already been brought forth over the past few years as we made changes along the way. Article five also includes article, off-street parking, loading, and circulation standards. We did adjust some of the parking ratios based on the steering committee's comments. When a development proposal comes before us, one of the requirements that the current ordinance has is based on the number of seats in a building. Well, when they're doing a development plan, sometimes it's kind of hard to determine what the occupant load will be at that time based on number of seats. So it's more of a per-square-foot base like some of our other parking standards are. So we think that will be a, a benefit. There's also incentives for bicycle park, parking, stacking requirements for drive-through. Currently, we do not have any stacking requirements, and that's why we end up with situations that, similar to a business here in town where the drive-through backs up onto the highways. We also identify cross-access requirements so that you don't have to get back onto the main roads. You can kind of cut through parking lots, many of which already exist today, although it hasn't been a standard of the city, where you can pull into Toys R Us and go all the way over to the Walmart shopping center without ever getting back onto Western Boulevard. The signage is moving from our current ordinance to the new ordinance. We're not proposing any changes with the sign standards. It was our intent to come back forward in, after the UDO adoption, and look at having a sign committee and discuss the sign regulations in detail. One thing that this code includes that our current codes do not are design standards for small non-residential businesses, large non-residential businesses, multifamily, and single-family. Some of the small non-residential design standards deal with building orientation on corner lots, the location of service, loading area and rooftop equipment, a glazing requirement so that we don't end up with no glass in buildings, materials, which is very minimal, and where accessory structures can go. On the large building, very similar standards, it's just for those buildings that are larger in nature. Multifamily design standards deal with orientation, size and height, once again, massing materials, and where the garage and parking locations should be on site. Single-family, very few standards based on the workshops that we had with city council where we brought forward key issues to city council. The biggest ones were, you know, orientation, the foundation requirement of, I believe it's 18 inches, is included based on the feedback we received from council, and that there's some variability between houses, so it's not the same house on every lot side by side by side. The subdivision standards that are now found in this code, Article six, it's primarily bringing forth our current standards. There wasn't a whole lot of things that we felt were wrong with our ordinances, so we're bringing them forward. We are changing some of the names so that we're more in line with industry standards. So our sketch plan will become, or basically our preliminary plan is our sketch plan moving forward. What we refer to as a general plan will now become a preliminary plan, and then the final plat remains as is. One other item that's to note, that city council has seen some requests of the multifamily along commercial corridors and commercial zone property where the cost per acre was much higher than, say, a residential subdivision. You've had a couple of fee waiver requests. We are proposing that we go to established per-acre cost of raw land and put that in the fee schedule every year with the budget process, and then that's what will be applied when the subdivision ordinance recreation land comes into play. That way, it's, it's more equal across the board regardless of how much the raw land Another thing that is a new standard for the subdivision part, Article six, is we are creating a provision for cluster or conservation subdivisions. The purpose here is to, or in, it's intended to save open space, and it will be limited to single-family. The idea is if you have 50 acres and you have some environmentally sensitive areas, flood plains, et cetera, that if you will reserve 50 percent of that acreage to remain natural, that you can build the same density on the other half of that development. So that would be something that the developer would have to desire to do, but it's a tool that will be in our toolbox that we currently do not provide for a new style of development. Once again, it will be an optional process that a developer would want to, or would have to want to apply for. Nonconformities. City council recently adopted the nonconforming section of our current ordinance. That was taken after a citizen requested it, and it was adopted by city council already. So staff has been applying that part already in our current code, and we feel that it is working fairly well, and we are not proposing any changes at this time. And that deals with, one of the problems we had before was if somebody came in and they wanted to do a small renovation project, they would have to bring the full site into compliance, and that caused some problems where it was more to do work outside than what they were putting in the building. So this establishes provisions on when you bring the buffering, parking signage into compliance. But like I said, that's already been adopted, so there's no changes there. Zoning enforcement. This is a Article eight, and it just outlines the procedures to ensure compliance and correction of violations that may exist. So if somebody is operating that home-based business in their house and they're not following the codes, this establishes the procedures and how they abate the problem in order to eliminate the penalty there. Article nine, the final article, is definitions. It also includes a rule of measurement for dimension and bulk standards. It classifies the uses, use categories, and use type descriptions, and it consolidates all definitions into one central location. Many times in the past with our current ordinance, something would come up and it, it wasn't clearly defined. This ordinance will better define and more clearly define things that have created problems in the past in terms that are used within the ordinance. So that led us to task four, the public hearing draft of the UDO, which has been completed and is before you tonight. City staff has gone out to the community and presented in several fashions, and I'll get into that here in just a second. The first one is the planning advisory board. We presented that to them last February, and they recommended approval. So your planning advisory board is supporting the adoption of this document. We've also gone to the Board of Realtors and presented the UDO, the Governmental Affairs Committee, Alton County Home Builders, Chamber of Commerce Small Business Committee. The webpage has a working database so that you can type in your address or find your address and see what your current ordinance is, or current use zoning designation, and what your proposed designation is, and see the purpose statements of both of those districts to kind of get an idea of what that really means for your property, what it's transitioning to. We've also detailed information on the webpage, which is at www.jackson, dot JacksonvilleNC.gov/udo. We have two videos that city staff and the city manager prepared, Land Use 101 and 201, that has, they're about two 25-minute videos that describe these processes, and they've been airing on G10. They're also available on the webpage. We've also put in utility bill inserts. Now, that doesn't mean this UDO is causing a change to your water rates. It's just been a way for us to get the word out to our citizens that this proposed change was forthcoming. And we've done that, I believe that was the March, February, and January, those utility bills. We also had three informational sessions, although one was iced out, so we canceled that because we didn't want to have anybody, you know, feeling like they needed to come down to that meeting when the roads were icy. So we ended up with two sessions. They were open to the public, and we had several people stop by in each session to find out more about what the UDO was and how it would impact them. We also had a front-page newspaper story, thanks to the Daily News, where they had called and, and got information to put a story out there. The general statute requirements, we complied with. We went with the large mailing, which is more than 50 properties. It required that we put in two half-page ads between 10 and 25 days before tonight's hearing. We met those legal requirements. We also went above and beyond that and put a full-page ad in the newspaper prior to that to try to get the word out that this ordinance was forthcoming. Everybody that's outside, according to Alton County Tax Office, that resides outside the general circulation of the Jacksonville Daily News, received a letter. We also posted signs throughout the city of Jacksonville to bring awareness that there was a, a hearing tonight at 7:00 PM. We also utilized our Twitter and Facebook accounts for alerts about these activities. So what are your next steps? Well, when I sit down here in just a second, the next step will be to open the public hearing. And here, if there's any folks here that want to speak, ask questions, whatever it may be, for the public hearing process. And then city council can consider whether or not to adopt this book, which we would encourage and hope that you would do so. One thing that we've basically put in place is an optional usage clause, which means if somebody wants to use the new UDO should council adopt this tonight, that they can optionally use it between now and June 30th, 2014. It will be completely voluntary. It'll be their choice. We're proposing a delayed effective date for those projects that may be in the works so that this new ordinance replaces the current ordinance effective July 1st, 2014. The existing zoning map is before you. It also includes the flight path overlay districts, the adult business overlay, and the billboard overlay. The proposed zoning, that includes the same adult business overlay, the same flight path overlay, same billboard overlay. One, one key point to mention here, with the last public hearing or open house session we had, there were some concerns raised thereabouts that same time that multifamily apartment complexes that are along Western Boulevard, for example, would become nonconforming. So we looked at that, and they indeed would have become nonconforming. We have changed the proposed zoning district for just those apartment complexes that we identified to residential multifamily high-density in order to avoid the nonconforming situation, to divert that from happening. We discussed that with some of the people that raised the concerns that had existing facilities, about seven or eight here in town, and they communicated that this relieved the concern that they had about creating the nonconforming situation. Beyond that, residential stays residential, commercial stays commercial. So some frequently asked questions that I thought I'd go ahead and share right now in case somebody hasn't asked, or if there's somebody in the audience. How is this affecting my property? Well, if you're in Northwoods, you're zoned residential. If council adopts this tonight, tomorrow, they're still residential. There's no change there. If you're on Western Boulevard and your property's zoned commercial today, tomorrow, your property's still commercial unless you're one of those apartment complexes that has an apartment complex on the ground that we're proposing to make a change from commercial to residential multifamily high-density in order to not create a nonconforming situation. Another question that we received is how will this affect my tax value? I would encourage you to call Harry Smith, the Alton County Tax Assessor, to find out what this would do to your tax value, but I would suspect if it's residential today and it's residential tomorrow, it's probably not going to change a whole lot. But I would say that they would need to get that confirmed from Mr. Smith. This has nothing to do with the recent Alton County tax reassessment. That is a totally separate matter, has nothing to do with the unified development ordinance. Another thing that we've heard asked is, am I being annexed? No. This is not an annexation. If you are in the ETJ today, you will be in the ETJ tomorrow. We are not changing boundaries. We are not annexing any properties. Other question is, well, how do I learn more? You can call one of city staff. We've got a, like a hotline number set up at 938-5056. Jeremy Abigail and myself. We get many phone calls a day since we started advertising this UDO. We will try to answer your questions. You can come down to city hall, we'll be glad to sit down and meet with you. You can also find information on the webpage that I gave to you a few moments ago at Where can I get a copy of the UDO? If council adopts this, we are going to have it online, which is there now on that webpage, but we also have it available on CD-ROM. It's about 471 pages, so it's rather, it's a rather thick document. Here's a copy. It's a thick document, so it'd be better than charging paper cost, having it on the webpage, which is free for anybody to go and find it online or to come pick up a CD-ROM here in Jacksonville. Glenn has been nice enough to pull up the webpage so city council can see it. Here you can find information about the UDO, and the draft code that is before you tonight is at the bottom of the screen here, found at this link. There's the video. The, the green link down here at the very bottom is where you can find this right now if you're sitting in the living room and you've got a laptop in your lap. And at this time, I will be happy to answer any questions that city council may have of me.
Council, any questions of Mr. King?
And I would ask Dr. Woodruff or Mr. Carter if there's anything that they would like to add.
I have a question.
Got a question for Ryan.
Okay.
Ryan, I want to discuss the Western corridor a little bit more. So what you're saying is that the multifamilies that were located on the Western extension were nonconforming based on the current zoning that you're proposing, but we took those out to make them conforming?
I can actually show you right here on the use table. If you, let's see, dwelling multifamily right, I guess I advanced the slide.
So I guess what I'm asking is they're, they're in the multifamily.
Zoning now.
Correct. They're proposing.
Haven't we set a precedence, though, for that commercial corridor with those there?
Already, currently?
You have not. What you have done over the years is you have looked at the development of commercial property for residential on an individual case. And what you have done through council action is you have determined whether that's an appropriate act or not. Recently, what you had was a rezoning by one of the engineering architectural or engineering surveying companies in town that you will recall did the reverse. Pardon me if you'll poll comments, please.
Sir? Sir?
Thank you. Okay. But what you have been doing in the past is individually approving each of those multiple family complexes. What Ryan is saying is that when we, and I have to commend John Pierce, you know, John being an NC State fan, he looks at all the details, and he pointed out to us about a week ago that the map would have made them all nonconforming. That was never your intent, it was never the staff's intent. We had two courses of action we could have taken on that. We could have made them a permitted use in the commercial corridor district, or we could have gone back and rezoned it to high-density multiple family. Because of concerns that you and others have heard regarding the overbuilding of multiple family, we felt to allow that to be a permitted use by right, where someone could simply come in and build, was not good for the market and was not something that we as a staff believed you as a council wanted. That what you as, as a council are interested in is making sure that we're not overbuilt, and where possible, we have reasonable processes to determine whether something should be rezoned. Therefore, we chose, but it's your final decision, to reclassify all of the existing multiple family on Western where they are in fact multiple family today. If you approve this today or two weeks. this today, or two weeks, or a month from now, they will be conforming. On the other hand, vacant property, we left as commercial, because we have all agreed that the Western corridor is where we believe a lot of commercial development is positive and should go. It does not preclude at any time that someone could come in and file a rezoning on vacant property. And that rezoning to multiple-family would, of course, go through a process, and that process will be the standard rezoning process, so that you, the planning commission, the citizens can determine, do we need more multiple-family? And number two, is that the right location for it? So, one of the issues before you, if you choose to address that, A or B, you can say, tonight, we agree with staff. We're going to leave everything that's vacant, commercial corridor, and we'll handle them on individual cases. On the other hand, if you believe that it should be by right, where you have no say in it from this point on, you can simply make it a permitted use in corridor commercial. Most important thing, though, is I want to assure you as a council, this action will not make any of the properties that are currently multiple-family on Western Boulevard non-conforming. They will all be conforming.
Just for knowledge, under B1, what are permitted, some of the permitted uses?
The current zoning?
Under the proposed.
Under the proposed, B1 goes away and it's corridor commercial.
Or a commercial. Because in the past, it would have been included, under a special use.
Yes, it was a special use permit, which required a public hearing, and special use permit is not technically a rezoning, but for all practical purposes.
It went through the process of the rezoning and then special use.
Ryan, can you read some of those?
I can. Commercial uses in the corridor commercial include kennels, indoor and outdoor, vet clinics, restaurants with drive-throughs, restaurants without drive-throughs, banks and other financial institutions, parking decks and garages, vehicle storage, funeral homes, laundromats, pawn shop lending institution, repair establishment, arcade, indoor commercial recreation, outdoor recreation, swimming pools, theaters, bars, taverns, nightclubs as a special use permit, convenience stores without gas sales, convenience stores with gas sales, drugstores with drive-throughs, drugstores without drive-throughs.
Thank you, thank you.
There is another option that we could make it a special use, rather than a permitted use, or actually, and I think that would be easier than trying to go through a rezoning process. So, you know, it's possible there is a third option that we could make it a special use, in which case, the planning advisory board and the city council then get the chance to look at it and talk about it. But I can assure you, it should be a lot easier than a rezoning.
Just let me address that.
Just keep in mind, Mr. Warden and council, that a rezon is a legislative action. So, you have much more leeway sitting as a council in reference to a rezon, because you're the legislator. You can pass it or not pass it. With a special use permit, if they meet A through G, then you are bound to allow it. It is a quasi-judicial hearing and so forth. So, again, the council would not have as much leeway in that regard, and I just wanted to point the two legal differences to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
So, back to what Mike alluded to. If you have a B1 today, then the multifamily is not a problem. Is that correct?
Currently, you can build a multifamily apartment complex in a B1 district.
See, because that's incongruent with what I've been understood, I guess, because when people ask me, I say, well, you're not really losing any rights. We're just changing the names of the different zonings. But in fact, somebody that owns B1 property is losing a right via this adoption.
That would be correct.
See, that...
I think the question you have to ask, though, is that actually a right you want them to have? And you have to decide that as the elected officials of the city. I will say to you, as a land planner from many years, just open your corridor commercial for multiple-family to go anywhere is simply not a good idea.
Exactly.
There are reasons why you have zoning districts. I will also say to you that your track record is exemplary, in that I, in the four years I've had the privilege to work with you, I have never seen you deny a rezoning that should have been approved. It's not like you are anti-growth. It's not like you are negative to development. I would also say to you again, though, you do have a responsibility to protect the value of property that is developed, as well as protecting the property rights of those who own vacant property. We know every day we have complaints about the fact that the community is overbuilt. Now, there are very few ways you can get into regulating the market. One way you do get into regulating the market is determining whether a zoning should be approved or denied. If you feel that you do not want to regulate vacant property that is on the corridor commercial, and you want to allow the multiple-family to go in, then you should direct the ordinance to be changed. If you believe it is better for the council to look at multiple-family on a zoning-by-zoning basis, as long as we're not making any of the current non-conforming, then that's the way you should so direct. The staff's position, though, is clear. From a planning standpoint, I will tell you as your manager, you should regulate vacant commercial property. You should reserve it for the development of commercial. And let me tell you another reason why. Multiple-family and single-family pay taxes. They do not generate the taxes to overcome the service requirements in most cases. You need to protect vacant commercial property, because that is where your tax base is built the strongest. That is where the services are the least, and that is where we believe you should guard the vacant commercial. But it, again, is your choice, as with anything legislative with the city.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. King?
Thank you, Ryan.
So, this time, this being a legislative action of the council, I'm going to open up a public hearing in this matter. Prior to opening the public hearing, I'm going to let you know that we do have some rules, council rules. When you, if you come up to the lectern, which one do you want them to use? The right, okay. Come to this lectern here. When you get there, I'll ask you to clearly state your name and address, so the clerk can record that. Each speaker will be allowed only one opportunity to speak, so please make sure you organize your thoughts before coming to the podium. We have allotted a maximum time per speaker of no more than five minutes, and we, any groups that are here represented tonight, if you would have a spokesperson instead of one person after the other getting up and saying the same thing, if you'd have one spokesperson representing the group. In the interest of time, we ask that if another speaker has already raised a point or addressed your concern, that it not be repeated. So, at this time, I'm going to recess the regular city council meeting and open the public hearing in this matter. If there's anyone present that wishes to speak to this issue, please indicate so by raising your hand. Mr. Pierce.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'll try to be brief. I had the privilege of serving on the steering committee, and to be quite honest with you, when I reviewed this document, of course, it's a very thick document, about 400, right at 500 pages, but I was a little shocked when I found out in the commercial corridor that multifamily was not permitted, as we see it today. I know we spoke about Western Boulevard, but we failed to look at, have we looked at Gum Branch Road? There's several projects on Gum Branch Road that was built in the B1 zone. We've made no mention of that. I would hope that we would look at those prior to making those non-conforming uses. And I think one thing I should point out in the council, that residential is permitted as long as it's upstairs above a business. And I would agree that the problem that I have, and I don't know if I can fully explain it, if I have a commercial piece of property a thousand foot deep, and I want to go 300 or 400 feet off the road and build one, let's just say it's a tax credit deal, well, the state has got to feel assured that it's going to be a use that would be approvable before they vote for the tax credits. Well, if I'm a landowner out there, I would be reluctant to resume my property to residential use only, and it would be in the commercial area. So, I feel, as what Mr. Warden eluded to, that I feel like it should be permitted, even at least with a special use, because a lot of these projects are not right up on the highway, but they may be 300, 400, 500 feet deep, such as Wellington Grove. That's off the highway, 800 feet, or 1,000 feet. In fact, I've got, we're planning a commercial project in front of it now. But if we adopt this ordinance, it would not be permitted to go there. And I agree that in these higher-end apartment projects, we are overbuilt. But there's still a need for people to have some subsidized housing in certain areas. If we adopt this ordinance, what are we going to do? Put them out in hauls run? Because they're not going to be permitted in a lot of areas. They're permitted now. And I was really shocked when I looked at it and seen that there was going to be so many non-conformities. But I do applaud the city for looking at it, the staff and the manager. But we have not mentioned Gum Branch, and I hope we have looked at Gum Branch Road as well. I don't know. I've not heard it mentioned tonight. There'd be several properties that'd be non-conforming. And I would also, again, like to remind the council, that it does permit multifamily as long as you live above where you work. Well, the only reason years ago people done that, they didn't have any other options. They didn't have the luxury of having another home somewhere. I don't believe anybody sitting around that council wants to work a business and close your business and go upstairs to live, unless you had to. I know I don't, and I would agree. I would be tickled if we could get a Mayfair. I don't see us getting a Mayfair in the near future. Maybe one day we will. But not only fronting, but right directly on the highway, this eliminates properties that's 700, 800 feet, that are zoned 1,000, 1,200 feet, B1 zone currently. That means no multifamily in those. I don't think that's really what we want. The problem is, if I apply for a state tax credit deal, they got to know in March or whatever that it would fit within the zone. Unless I come forward rezoning, but now I could supply them a special use in the B1 zone, and they may approve it. It may get funded. But why would I want to change my property to residential when I need it to be commercial, if it didn't get funded in the fall? So, it really does create a dilemma for a need. There's still a need for some moderate to low-income housing, which we don't have. And if we adopt this, I'm afraid we're going, and look, I served on the steering committee, and I know there will be some glitches, but I think we worked over two years, page by page, and there was a lot of people that were diligently working on it. But I was a little surprised, and I don't know how it got in there, but it did, but I think we tried to fix it. But I do want to make sure that we are looking at Gum Branch and some other areas, not only Western Boulevard. If you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Other? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is John Friesen. I'm an attorney from New Bern. I represent East Carolina Coastal, East Carolina Development Group, ECCDI. I'm sorry, I'm getting the name wrong today. The council members brought up one very important point that my client had contacted me about, and it was about this B1 zoning change to the commercial corridor. The planning director had mentioned there were seven or eight apartment complexes or multifamily residential complexes that would be impacted, but they were actually somewhere around the neighborhood of 22 or 23 that would be affected by this change. I'll give the council a few of them. The names Liberty Point, Windsor Place, Glenstall, Meadows Gate, Arlington West, Plantation, Phoenix Park 1 and 2, Fox Hollow, Wellington Grove, The Reserves. These are some of the many multifamily complexes that will be impacted by this change. The change is significant, because as the other councilmen, I think Mr. Thomas mentioned, that they will lose a significant right. Some of these developments aren't completed. I am aware of one that is, that could be expanded, that more multifamily residences could be built on that property. And if the use is non-conforming, then the new zoning ordinance prohibits an expansion of that. It says, according to that subsection, a non-conforming use should not be enlarged, expanded, in an area occupied, or intensified. So, there are several neighborhoods and several developments that need to be considered before I think this ordinance in, the zoning ordinance is adopted and changed. Thank you.
Other hands? All right, calling once, twice. Do I? Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Good evening, Reverend Brown.
Yes, sir. Bless you. I'm Pastor James Brown. I'm pastor First Baptist Church, Broadhurst Street, and I live at 202 University Drive. Our mission, I want to know basically what the proposed changes will be for that, whether that would be a conforming use or a non-conforming use. If it were a non-conforming use, I want to know what we'd have to do to be a conforming entity. The same is true about the church that I pastor. And one last thing, and that is, a number of my members stay in the area close to First Baptist, the old, well, the Second Chance Mission now. And I want to know that if we adopt this, that those persons are not going to be displaced, because much of the building that is going on in the area, basically, is much more expensive. I have members that can't afford to move. They are not in a situation where moving is in their future. So, I would want to know that all of them are being protected, and I would hope that the council, our mayor, and all of you will look at them and see their plight if we adopt the UDO.
Thank you, Reverend Brown.
Thank you.
Dr. Woodruff, in response to his question, nobody would be displaced by this ordinance.
I think what I would suggest is that you continue with the public hearing, and then as soon as that's over and you close it, we will begin to address these concerns.
Thank you, Reverend Brown. We're going to address your concern. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else present that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
This is all new to me. First, I'm a Marine here. I've been here for 33 years. Name is Ellis Singletary. I live on Wool Swamp. And my wife joined the senior citizen at the carnival, and I think she paid $17 because we weren't in the zone. And I live off of Wool Swamp on Cattle Blueberry. And I wanted to know, so she said, we're going to have a picnic, and she said, because we're not in the zone, you're going to have to pay also $17 for the picnic, because you're out of the zone. Now, to me, being here 19 years with the Department of Corrections, 22 years in the Marine Corps, I want to know from you all, the carnival charges that for non-residents. So, we're talking two different worlds here, right? Am I correct?
One I will do, though, is after the public hearing, I'll have one of our staff members talk with you about this and answer your question for you.
Okay.
Thank you. What was your last name again? I didn't...
Singletary.
Singletary. Thank you, Mr. Singletary. Thank you. That's the out of city and city thing. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Please indicate by raising your hand. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Kelly Victor. I live at 201 San Piper Place in Holly Ridge, which is actually near Sneed's Ferry. I currently live in a subdivision that has about seven houses in that subdivision. We have, in the last two years, had a Taco Bell built in our subdivision, and now there is a multifamily apartment complex or townhomes that are supposed to be going up right on the other side of my neighbor's home, so very close to my house. My home value has dropped tremendously, and once these go up, I'm sure it will drop even more, to the point where I can't... more, to the point where I can't resell it. And renting, when I have new property for rent going up right next door, is also going to be very difficult. So that, that property hasn't been developed yet, and it seems like it's been stalled for some reason. I've talked to Mr. King, but he has not returned several of my phone calls since then about who's maintaining the road, because the road is not maintained by the state. The permit was denied. So I'm not even sure, with all the work trucks going up and down the road, who is supposed to be fixing the potholes? We never had an HOA instated, as far as I know, since the development went up. I'm just wondering how this is gonna affect my neighborhood, if there's a change, or even if there isn't a change. I don't know what's going on or how there is a fast food restaurant within... I mean, I could wave to the people in the fast food restaurant. And there is now these townhomes that are supposed to be built right next door to my house. So I'm no longer in a subdivision, and it's gonna be hard to resell my home. I have three small children who used to play outside, but now with the traffic, the drive-through, it's not as safe. So I'm just wondering how these, how these ordinances are gonna affect my property outside of Jacksonville city limits.
Well, honestly, they're not gonna affect your property.
Would you clarify again, where do you live?
Coastal Village, off of Highway 210.
Yeah.
There's a Taco Bell there.
You're, you're well outside of our jurisdiction, so this change in the ordinance shouldn't affect you at all.
Okay, because I received a letter from you.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Why don't you hang back?
And I've talked to Mr. King, because I was told I'm not, we're still in Onslow County zoning. But I haven't gotten any answers as far as how is there a fast food restaurant that was allowed to be built inside of our subdivision? You have to actually drive into our subdivision to access the drive-through and to leave the drive-through, and how there is now this new development going up right on the other side of my neighbor's home.
Do me a favor, after the meeting, stick around for a few minutes. I want the staff people to talk with you and explain something.
Okay.
Explain it to you. Thank you. What's your last name again? I'm, I'm sorry, I can't...
Victor.
Thank you, Ms. Victor.
Thanks.
If you'll hang around, though, afterwards, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay. Calling once, twice. And we'll close the public hearing on this matter. And council, you're being asked to... Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Woodruff. Go ahead.
You know, first of all, we appreciate everybody's concern because this is not a minor matter. What I'd like to do is ask one of the staff members if they would go with Ms. Victor and explain some of her concerns outside. For the public, the property that she is talking about is not within the city limits. It is also not within the city's ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction. So there's absolutely nothing this ordinance does that will impact her property in any way, because that's county zoning. But we'll have, see, Abigail has gone out to, to talk with her. Relative to the matter that Reverend Brown talked about, good to see you, sir. Appreciate you coming out tonight. I believe that you're talking about the, the building, the brick church that is there on generally Court Street. Is that correct? Okay. Ryan, can you or one of the staff address the issue relative to the church? Jeremy?
Here.
Here, so the audience can hear the...
As far as Mr. Brown, his specific question, I don't even know what the property's zoned right now. I mean, I'd, that's why we've had the public meetings, the call-in sessions, to try to find out very specifics down to the property level. I mean, I'll be happy to, to get with him and explain the current proposed, but I can't rattle that zoning and, and how that would impact his property right now. But there was no attempt to make a difference in their property, and if that's not conformed in any way? If it's residential, it's gonna be residential. If it's commercial, it's gonna be commercial. But I mean, getting down to the specifics, I mean, we would have to look at what it's zoned and, and go through that.
I think the most important thing that we can certainly tell you is this. If that, if the facility is currently used as a homeless shelter, which my understanding is it is, there's nothing in this ordinance that will cause you to close that homeless shelter. There is nothing in this ordinance that would cause the persons who are in that shelter to be displaced. There is also nothing in this ordinance that would cause anyone who lives in a single-family home, an apartment complex, a duplex, anything downtown where they're currently living. There's nothing in this ordinance that would cause those persons to be displaced. So there's really, I mean, this is certainly about a new zoning code that is, that is, while we said it was simplified, it's still pretty complex. But it will not displace persons in any way. What we can certainly do, though, is verify what your current zoning is for the homeless shelter, and then we can tell you under the new downtown zoning, if that's what it's in, whether that's a permitted use or whether that would become nonconforming. But even if it becomes nonconforming, it doesn't mean that you can't continue to operate. What it would mean, though, is that you could not expand it if it was nonconforming. But again, we can look at the specifics and be happy to meet with you and set up an appointment to answer that question. Let's see, Mr. Singletary, on the fee, I believe you must be talking about the, the fee schedule for renting park facilities. Is that what you were talking about?
I know it's, I mean, my wife retired, and she joined the carnival over there, I mean, senior citizens.
Okay.
And she was, she was charged because she wasn't, wasn't an accountant, she was charged seventeen dollar fee. And we had the picket, so she said, well, you have to pay seventeen dollars also because you're not in the city.
Okay.
That's what I was speaking of. I mean, I guess the, or the billing or something, you have a process where the citizens outside of the city has to pay for public use because not going there to vote.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I can, I can assure you, we're not gonna vote you, we're not gonna charge you to vote. That's a great American thing. We appreciate you doing that. Let me address that for just a minute. There is a fee schedule that the city council adopts for all of our recreation facilities. Now, anybody, whether you're a citizen taxpayer inside the city, or whether you're a county taxpayer, of course, we're all county taxpayers, whether you live inside the city or not, you can come and you can, you know, play in the parks. That's what we're, you know, we're, we're there. But if you actually want to participate in a sporting event, like join one of the little league programs, or even the men's softball program, or if you want to rent a picnic shelter, because those facilities were built by city tax money, not county tax money, there is a differential in fees. Now, your particular thing relative to being, having your wife being charged for some type of picnic, I'll be happy to meet with you after this meeting and try to clarify that. But I do want to explain that for the use of facilities, other than just open parks, the council does have a differential, because as taxpayers inside the city, they have already contributed. But if you'll stay a moment afterwards, I'll be happy to talk with you about that, that matter.
Thank you.
There was one on the list, if I may.
Yes.
Okay. ECCDI, Keith Walker and Mark McCleskey were kind enough to share that list, and we went down the list after we had already looked and canvassed the entire city. Because anybody that was an existing apartment complex that was zoned business one, we converted to residential multifamily high density, so they would not become nonconforming. Beecham Apartments on Seventeen South, Cornerstone Condos, which is on Liberty, the entire city. And so we went through that list, and we appreciate them sharing that list with us. So we have gone down that list, and we have checked all of those, as well as the entire city.
I think, Mayor, the, the comment that I would make is, the real issue is, what do you want to do with the vacant commercial property? As the attorney has very wisely told you, as a UNC graduate and excellent attorney, he has said, it is your choice to determine, do you want a legislative action? What was the other term you used?
Quasajudicial.
Or a quasijudicial action. You could, as Mr. Warden has suggested, you could set up in the corridor commercial that it be a special use. That is a different process than rezoning. I would say to you that of the three options available, make it a permitted use, make it a special use, or make it a rezoning, the one that the staff would definitely recommend you say no to is a permitted use. If you feel more comfortable with it being a special use permit, that is your, your decision. If you're more comfortable having it to be rezoned, that again is your decision. Mr. Pierce makes some valid points on that. The one thing we would ask is, please do not make it a permitted use by right in the corridor commercial. Now, beyond that, the options available to you, obviously, tonight are to, to vote, yes or no? To make amendments, yes or no? To postpone this for two weeks and give staff direction that you want more information brought back about some of these points. The one thing I would remind people, and all of us, is, we've been at this six years. Another two weeks isn't gonna matter. If you're ready tonight, we're comfortable. If you're not ready tonight, you know, like I said, we've been at it six years. Six years and two more weeks is not gonna...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get this put on the floor for consideration. So I would make the motion that the council repeal the zoning and subdivision ordinances, adopt the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, the new official zoning map, including existing adult business billboard, flight plan, overlay districts, based on the finding of the fact A through D being found in the affirmative. The zoning advances the public interest, and with the corrections, staff recommends for the zoning along the corridors on Western Boulevard. Is that covered accurately?
We don't even need that, Mr. Bittner, because we've already made those corrections.
Okay, that's fine.
Just as you just printed there.
So that is your motion.
Yes, sir.
I'm on, I'm on a daze without, without a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we do what Mr. Bittner suggested, except that I would like to see us make multifamily a special use permit in the commercial corridor.
Any discussion, council?
We ask for clarification. Okay? If this, if this motion passes, all of the map that we have shown in the commercial corridor where we were rezoning it to multiple family, I'm assuming that the motion says that that will be reversed to corridor commercial, and that a special use will be applied to those? Or are you suggesting that the, all of the multiple family that exist today be left as the map shows it, multiple family, but that the vacant commercial corridor will then have the, the special use permit? Could you clarify that part of the motion?
I like, I like what you just said. Yes, sir. I think that let's leave those that are, that you've changed to multifamily, leave those, but let's make the vacant reflect the special use, if, if so, if so passed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Mayor, you know, I, I started the conversation. I'm still a bit uncomfortable. And I, you know, we've, we've spent six years on this, as, actually, Mayor Phillips and I had just come on the board, as Rhonda Parker started this at that time. So it's been almost eight years. I just believe that before, for me, to make a final decision, I would, I would prefer a little bit more in-depth study on the implications of the special use and of the just standard rezoning as, as presented. I think Mr. Pierce brought up a great point. We really need to look at Gum Branch. We really need to look at all these commercial parcels and, and really make a good decision. For me, I'm uncomfortable voting one way or another at this particular time. I think there's some valid concerns. I think we're rushing into a vote, and I would ask that my fellow council members would defer for, till the next meeting, to, to gather this information and to have some valid information before us to make a final decision.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Second.
I just withdraw. I was gonna say, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Let's get that, just withdraw and let the, the motion second to defer, and we'll defer to the next meeting.
Okay.
Any, any particular instruction?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I just, can we continue the discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm, I'm certainly fine with that. I certainly don't want to push a, a decision down anybody's throat here. I think Randy brings up a very, very valid point in that people have bought commercial land under the current B-1 designation with the anticipation and the understanding that multifamily is a permitted use. We're changing the game on that right now, without them having an opportunity to change, they can't change the fact that they now own this property. We've been okay with, historically, we've been okay up to this point with approving multifamily complexes in a B-1 business zone. To my knowledge, I don't know that we've turned any down. We're all concerned about the overbuilding of multifamily housing here in Onslow County, in Jacksonville in particular, and residential. But I think the market has now seen that there is not a, it's not a, the developers are seeing that this is not a good place right now, our good time, to build multifamily housing. I don't want to, I, I think the, given a chance to use a special permit gives, keeps their rights. I don't really want to take their rights away from them. They have spent a lot of money, in many cases, for commercial property with the expectation that under the current zoning B-1, they would be allowed to build multifamily. They may choose not to, but that may be something they'd like to keep. So, but I'm certainly okay with deferring the decision. I, I think anytime that you can communicate and talk about other options, I think you'd make a better decision. I'm certainly not opposed to that.
Well, I think, you know, the staff and, and the volunteers who've sat on these committees for so many years have done such a tremendous job, and here we are at the juncture. And if there's some concerns, I think we ought to go ahead and, and go through the diligent effort of, of making sure that we have all the information necessary to make a final decision. I think it would help everyone.
Let's, let's get some more information. Instead of having an up and down vote, we'll, we'll get our information together, have some more discussion on it. And, you know, another thing is too, is with Mr. Willingham not being here tonight, have the full council, because the full council's been involved in this whole process, so I think it would be best to have everybody here. You had some...
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I came to the meeting, I thought prepared to vote this in, and I guess my main concern is that I now realize I didn't have a full understanding of it. I thought through the process that I had gained somewhat. I mean, obviously, I don't know four hundred and some pages worth of details, but I, I did have a misconception as to what was actually going to occur, because people had asked me specifically, am I gonna lose rights? And I was, felt I was assuring them that, no, we're gonna change the, streamline the process, it's just gonna be the same rose by a different name. And so I, that, that's my main concern, that I, that I didn't understand possibly what I was gonna do.
Well, our apology from the staff standpoint of not clarifying that point.
Just one, one last comment. I, I wanna thank the, the steering committee. That steering committee was made up of developers, real estate people, a pastor in the community, business people, just regular citizens, people trying to assist the staff and the city in, in bringing in this new development ordinance. You know, I think one of the main complaints that I've heard about the Affordable Care Act, you know, there's probably some good things in there, but none of the, none of the legislatures really got a chance to read that thousand-page document. Well, here we've had a four hundred and fifty-page UDO that I can assure you that the staff and that steering committee looked at every page, in every case, every paragraph. We may not have looked at every word, but, but page by page, four hundred and fifty pages, that thing was gone through with a fine-tooth comb, argued back and forth, ideas kicked around, and, and... through with a fine-tooth comb, argued back and forth, ideas kicked around, and it's, I think, a good effort. So I want to thank the steering committee for their due diligence, and I certainly have no problem, and as Dr. Woodruff said, in what's another two weeks, so.
Dr. Woodruff, can I just, just say on behalf of the citizens, is there any possible way that while we are mauling over what we're going to do with this particular ordinance, if we can put back on the table the council meeting due to the inclement weather to give citizens an opportunity to have that third meeting that they lost? And Councilmember Warden did an excellent job in terms of talking about the various different people in the community, your stakeholders, who really had a part in this establishment of this UDO. But also recognize that sometimes even the citizens may sometimes feel that they still don't have a voice, because they may feel that government is going to do what government is going to do. I would also encourage those individuals to come out to this third meeting and be a part of this process, because even though it was already mentioned that no one would be displaced because of this, if there's any way, let's see, I don't mean to be rambling, but just say, for instance, if you have a particular area in the city where it's not zoned for mobile homes, but you currently have mobile homes in that particular area, if with the new ordinance, whatever that house, whatever that zoning may be, is there a possibility that, God forbid, if we were to have a hurricane on tomorrow, and those mobile home trailers were destroyed, and they're not in a classified mobile home area, then would those individuals be displaced because they could not then replace their mobile homes with another mobile homes because of the impetus with the UDO that may be coming in legislation?
The answer there is, let me give you a series of answers, yes, 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 and no. Now, let me explain to you the answers, okay? First of all, we'd be very happy to have another public meeting. That's not a problem. Staff is here to serve, we'll be happy to do that. The second thing is, wherever there is a nonconforming use, and in many cases, mobile homes are nonconforming uses, that exists today, not the new UDO once you adopt it. The UDO may make some things nonconforming the way of mobile homes, but if you have a nonconforming use and a tornado blows it down, a fire unfortunately happens, whatever may happen, then that, that use cannot be replaced. That already exists in the zoning law. So there are places in town where we have nonconforming mobile homes, and I'll give you an example. In the downtown area that is currently zoned, what's the current zoning? RD5 or RD3, which is going to become, what category? DTR, downtown residential. Neither of those districts, none of those districts currently allow mobile homes, but we do have some. If something happened in that mobile home, then it could not be replaced.
With a mobile home.
With a, with a mobile home. You could replace it with a conforming use. So, you know, we will be very happy. The other thing that I would encourage everybody to do, at the city council's direction, we set up a website. Ryan will come up and tell you how to access that again, because I'm not a computer person. But what it allows you to do is to put in your address. So if you live at 1313 Mockingbird Lane, which is the home of Herman Munster, by the way, if you live there with Herman Munster, you can pull up 1313 Mockingbird Lane, and it will show you your current zoning and the uses that are in it, and the proposed zoning and uses that are in there. So we would, we would encourage everyone to go to the website and look up your individual address. But if you're in a mobile home, I will say to you, don't be surprised if you find you're already nonconforming.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. I'm sorry.
Ms. Washington and Dr. Woodruff, both have indicated they will not be here for the April 8th meeting.
Well, then we'll push it off for four weeks.
If that would be acceptable, the 22nd, I believe, would be the next meeting.
Is that, in your motion, is that good? Okay. Everybody's give a second? Okay. All right. Are we, are we able to vote on this now? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion here to defer this until the April 22nd meeting, and staff supplies with additional information?
Was the other motion withdrawn?
Yes. Properly correct. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to our first session of public comment for the evening, and I have, this is be our first and only session of public comment for the evening. I have Mr. Jeff Bender that has signed up to speak. Hey, Jeff, come on up. We'll let everything settle down, and you can start. How's everything going? It's a pleasure meeting you two. Thank you very much for helping us out tonight. I do thank you.
You did outstanding job, young man.
Yes, you did.
Good to see you again. Take care. Yes, sir.
Good night. Thank you.
I guess when we had the discussion on corridor commercial, I guess we decided, you know, I don't know what happened. Who knows?
Somebody, I don't think anybody's going to get financing to do it.
I know.
Do you?
That's today.
I mean, there may be a need one of these days.
Oh, they will. Oh, they will.
Good valid points on both sides of the issue.
Yes, there was.
All right. Well...
I'm hoping you're here to announce some discount days there.
Sell on hot, sell on hot dogs and Paul Parkers. Reverend Brown, take care. Okay.
Yes, sir. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, too. All right, we'll go ahead and start back up here. And Jeff, you just give your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Jeffrey Bender. My address is 2550 Onslow Drive. I was currently just wanting the council to consider changing on the LED message boards regulations in town. Currently, the city's LED signs are regulated not to have any animation or blinking lights, and not to change for 29 seconds. The NC DOT has the billboards, and they're able to change every eight seconds. The large billboards, like you see when you drive to Swansboro, can be seen 1,500 feet out. Traveling at 60 miles an hour converts to 88 feet per second, which means they have basically a 17-second, 17 seconds of view before they pass the billboard. When you look at that, in Jacksonville, our speed limits range from 35 to 45 miles an hour, which converts over to about 51 to 66 feet per second. The signs we have in Jacksonville can be seen, on average, 500 feet away from the sign. If a vehicle is going 45 miles an hour, then they have eight seconds of view time. And at 35 miles per hour, they have nine seconds of view time. So to be in comparison with the NC DOT, the city should allow the LED signs to change roughly every five seconds. Most drivers will only see the sign change one time before they pass it. This allows us to use larger text, or larger photos or clip art, in order to get the message across faster, to allow the drivers to read the signs faster, allowing them to keep their eyes on the road. I'm not here to ask for any changes to the animation or the blinking. I feel those are distractions, especially at nighttime. I feel this modification in time will allow businesses to focus on making sure we keep our messages short with easy, large, easy-to-read text or pictures, and allow businesses to choose the time that is sufficient to read the information on the sign. I have tried to pull, put all my information on one screen so it would not need to change, and it cut down the distance. It could be read from, to about 300 feet out. It cut it down by about 150 to 200 feet, and it doubled the amount that the driver's trying to read and the amount of time that they're passing. I think for safety reasons, the time should be changed to five seconds or greater, you know, allowing the business owners to decide the amount of time it takes to read the information that they are putting on the screen. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Can you look into his concerns about that? I'm not sure what the...
We'll be happy to. The one thing that we did not say when the public was here, and so I'll just take a moment and say it right now, any ordinance as complex, even though in theory we've made it simplified, in reality, I'm not so sure government ever simplifies anything, but there will always be the need to look at issues that come up. You should not be surprised if over the next six months, we don't have every other council meeting a revision, because it's everybody's best effort. Now, this particular matter, we'll be happy to meet with him and further discuss it and give you additional information. I would very quickly point out, though, that studies are there that show at different speeds, the importance of signs not changing or changing. So we will be happy to get you digital informations on that.
Thank you.
I thought it was my understanding that we were going to look at that as part of the comprehensive sign package.
That's correct.
So, I mean, that's something, you know, that's going to come up, that you could probably have some input into, you know, so. Appreciate you coming out tonight, Jeff. Okay. I think that's all we got tonight, other than, we got some reports, and I think I will start with Mr. Warden. He looks very pensive down there. He must have plenty to talk about.
No, I don't, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
No report.
No reports.
Mr. Bittner?
No report this evening.
Very quickly, TDA, Tourism Development Authority, this past weekend, we had nearly 800 runners that participated in the annual Engineers Challenge Run at Courthouse Bay. In the past, this had about one-third the number of runners, our outreach, which produced many heads on beds, and we're still continuing to get reports, demonstrated the power of promoting many of the things that we currently already have, that we've been involved with, that we're helping the promotion of. We are accepting applications for the FY15 Tourism Development Fund projects, and they're being completed now. If you know of an event that could benefit heads on beds for Jacksonville lodging facilities and do not get an application, call Carmella George or visit the city's website. In preparation for a long-range capital budget discussion, the Tourism Development Authority will meet in an extended session April 17th. During that time, we will hear from those who work the development of tourism every day about their view of the future. The authority will hear these reports and then consider awards for the Tourism Promotion Fund. The session is set for 11:00 a.m., Thursday, April 17th, in Meetings Room A and B, and it is open to the public. Also, from our MPO, the current federal transportation legislation known as MAP 21 will expire on October 1st, 2014. This legislation has provided maintenance, operation, construction funding for all transportation systems within the U.S. The president's budget increases funding for transportation by approximately 300 million, 300 billion, I'm sorry, over a four-year period. However, it's unclear if the proposal will survive the legislative process. There appears to be broad support in Congress for additional spending on transportation infrastructure, but no consensus where the revenue will come from. So we continue to work on those efforts. The MPO staff submitted our transportation project list to the NC DOT earlier this month, and we expect to have preliminary project scores by the end of March. Once these scores are available, the MPO will solicit feedback from the council and the public before making a recommendation to the TAC on the prioritization of those projects based on the scoring and input. And that is the end of my report. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protemozar. The only thing I have tonight, so I just want to ask everyone that's watching the regular meeting tonight to get the chance to catch the workshop that we had earlier, especially the pre-budget information that was put out by Dr. Woodruff, and just to let you know right now where we're at as far as the financial situation the city faces in the coming year. And, Dr. Woodruff, any input?
Two quick things. First of all, the mayor and council have been very concerned about stacking problems on Seventeen at the intersection of Seventeen and Western. At your direction, we have been working with the MPO staff, Anthony Prins here in the city, and also with the DOT officials. The DOT is currently contemplating, and we believe will approve, extending those stacking lanes substantially beyond so that many more people can stack. We're continuing to look at the timing at that intersection. We hope that within the next several days, we're going to be able, probably the next week, not the next several days, make additional timing changes. But we do want the public to know, we're aware of that problem, we're trying to find some solutions. We believe the DOT is going to be favorable to amend the current construction contract that will allow us to extend those turn lanes substantially beyond where they currently are. So we'd ask the public to have patience. The mayor and council and staff are looking at this. We appreciate the assistance of Representative Shepherd in Cleveland, Senator Brown, as we've worked on this matter. As always, Mayor, we thank you and the council for your service, your dedication, for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Mr. Carter?
No report.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? I take it that's aye.